Good evening and welcome to this Borough Council public hearing for the purposes of the proposed use, evaluating the proposed use of Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds. I need to introduce those in attendance. All right, let's go around the room. Helen Lawson from the County of Adams, Borough staff, Charlie Marshall, Charles Gabel, Robert Harbaugh, Sarah Stoll. All right, elected officials, council members, Mr. Berger, myself, Leslie Heiser, Matt Moon, Karen Lawber, Judy Butterfield, Mayor Rita Freeling. On the telephone, council members Patty Lawson and Chad Allen Carr. And from the public, Mr. Scott English and Mr. Jim Hale. So, all right. Harlan.
First off, I'd just like to apologize for being late. The purpose for this is, this is our second public hearing for our CDBG grant. The Community Development Block Grant is an annual allocation that the county and Gettysburg Borough receives. And so, you know, the borough is able to dedicate these funds each year to an eligible use of its choosing. The purpose of this public hearing is to announce to the public what the borough intends to use the funds for, and then to allow the public to have the opportunity to provide public comment. So for the 2022 application, I should also mention that the county administers the CDBG grant to this, on behalf of the, on behalf of Gettysburg Borough to the state. So Gettysburg Borough's projects will be included in the county's application to the state, and the county will work with the state to make sure that any eligibility requirements are met during the, during the review of our application. The Borough of Gettysburg intends to use the 2022 CDBG funds for ADA-compliant sidewalk and streetscape improvements along North Washington Street. The Borough's total allocation is $129,000 and ninety, $129,000 and $94 and zero cents. The Borough is elected to use $2,000 of that allocation for administration fees, with the remainder going towards the sidewalk ADA improvements along North Washington Street. The, the application is due October 28th. The, you know, the hearing that we have today was advertised in the paper. We also provided people, the ability to provide public comment ahead of this meeting, ahead of this hearing, which I believe we haven't received any public comments ahead of time.
Sir.
So.
We have not, no.
Okay. So, so with that, I would just ask that we open the hearing up for public comment to those in attendance today.
Okay.
I, I would say.
Should we, I'd ask that we just explain a little bit of how this will interface with B2.
I wanted to backtrack real quick. I didn't have a chance. I did receive a phone call from Nancy Kramer, who would be interested in pursuing the use of CDBG funds for affordable housing within the municipality. If not this year, for future years.
Liz Marshall, can you allude to reference how this will kind of interface with B2? And how this all kind of works together?
Yeah, so last year, yep. So we have a Gettysburg interlude plan that would bring, that would have improvements on Racehorse Alley from Beaufort to Washington Street. And the plan was to have it from, also from Washington, from the alley, Racehorse Alley to the train tracks. We, the full funding still eludes us, but we designated our last year's CDBG towards the section of, of that, between the alley and the railroad tracks to widen the sidewalk. There's places where the sidewalk are only actually two feet wide. And add streetlights and trees. And then this would accompany that funding to be able to complete that specific section standalone without, even if we don't get the funding for the rest, even if there's delays for the funding for the rest of the trail, we still will be able to fix that sidewalk and get it up to ADA compliance in that area, so.
Okay. All right.
The Community Development Block Grant program allows us to do three-year, multi-year projects. So the Borough, Borough would like to, is able to dedicate or allocate three years of consecutive funding to a singular project.
Okay. This also ties in with the stormwater that will have to be built under North Washington Street, correct?
Correct.
This is all in the same piece of real estate?
Yes.
Okay. So, kind of similar to what we did on South Street, we're trying to work with various sources of funds to make things happen. As Ms. Marshall identified, the important part here is we can get this done whether or not the, some of the federal funds we're looking at for CDBG, or pardon me, for B2 come through. So, comments from the public? All right. No public comment besides we received Ms. Kramer? Okay. But we are adjourned. All right. Good evening and welcome to the September business meeting of the Borough of Gettysburg. All please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge, please. Fledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right. Good evening. I would note that council members Patty Lawson and Chad Allen Carr are on the telephone this evening, just saying via telecommunication device. I do have a few announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the August 22nd, 2022 work session, consistent with Section 708a1, Section 708a2, Section 708a4, and Section 708a5, the Sunshine Act. An executive session of the Borough Council will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708a1, Section 708a2, Section 708a4, and Section 708a5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to discuss matters involving the employment, the terms and conditions of employment, and the policies and procedures for complaints relating to Borough employees. Two, to provide informational updates and to discuss strategy related to the negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters Local Number 776, with the Gettysburg Borough Police Employees Labor Organization. Three, to receive and consider information relative to the implementation of the proposed decision and order entered by the hearing examiner of the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board in case number PFC 2042E, captioned Teamsters Local Union Number 776, the Borough of Gettysburg. Four, to receive informational updates and pending grievances filed by Teamsters Local Union Number 776 on behalf of the Gettysburg Borough Police Employees Labor Organization. And to receive, review, and consider information and to discuss strategy and connection with matters on which identifiable complaints have been made or are expected to be filed. And five, to review and discuss matters of Borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right. On our agenda, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion related to the agenda this evening? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All.
Any opposed? Okay, and we have our agenda. Next is a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on August 8th, 2022, the CDBG public hearing, zoning text amendment, public hearing, and special meeting and work session, which occurred on August 22nd, 2022, as presented.
So moved.
Okay, are there any adjustments to those minutes? Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Berger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Moon. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All.
Any opposed? Okay. With that, we go to public comments. If you need public comment, I ask that you share your name and address. Our first public comment session is limited to matters that are on the agenda, so if you've not had the opportunity to review that, I would urge you to do so, and we limit you to five minutes. So, is there anyone for public comment this evening? Okay, items on the agenda? Yep, please take the podium if you would, so the folks at home can do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Mohammed Ashraf.
Yes, sir.
I am the property owner. My company owns one property in Gettysburg, 150 Carlisle Street, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. I am, I was struggling from last three years to get the construction permit. I was having a one project about five, six million dollar investment in this town, but due to some personal grudges, and I am severely in hardship to get the permit due to one or two people in the borough. I was feeling lot of difficulties, but I was thinking the elected peoples are more powerful in this country, and I am still thinking that elected people should work, and they should see each and every corner of this borough, how peoples are working in the borough office. Whenever I was coming three times a week, nobody is in the office. Everybody is out, but the sign is saying inside. I stayed there for one hour, two hour, nobody was coming out. I went to the water department about more than 12 times. That person, lastly, he said, "I can send you in your email." And yesterday, he sent me message, "I am unable to upload those pages in your email" after three, four months. So this is the condition of the information. If you want to get any information from the borough office, it's very difficult to get that one. I will not take too much time. I see, I submitted five-time revised plans. You know that architect engineers, they charge money dollars by minutes, by hours. And I paid about $50,000 on that one, and my result is big zero. Only due to the planning director of this borough, she is personally taking interest that not to give me the permit. Ultimately, she has mentioned in this letter, which I got from the planning commission, that I have installed the fence around the property, which I installed about nine years before. I have the permit with me, but the lady is saying that our fence has been installed illegally without permit. She don't know, the permit copy must be in the borough office, and it is in the borough office, and they have charged my account. They took the fee from my account, but she is saying.
I'm trying to find this on the agenda. Is this on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
Where is it on the agenda this evening?
I called the secretary that I want to address for this property, and she told, "Okay, we will give you 10 minutes."
Okay, yeah, our second public comment period is when we do items that are not on the agenda. So I'm gonna allow you to finish, but in the future, I'd ask you to deal with items that are on the agenda. Okay?
Okay. I was thinking she put me on the agenda, but if it's not.
Yeah, we do a public comment period, and you can speak, but for the first public comment period, we deal with items that are on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment per session? Okay.
Hello. My name is Ben Seitz. I'm here representing myself and my two partners, which represent GC Solutions in Chambersburg. And I'm here to talk about the motion before the board today, Article VIII concerning the enactment of proposed change to the ordinance, to creating changes in the language from short-term rental, one per residential, or sorry, from multiple to one. So I qualify myself today, coming here to talk to you about this, because I'm not a resident of Gettysburg. However, I was born and raised in Chambersburg. I spent a lot of time here. I love coming to Gettysburg. My family and I still come to Gettysburg all the time. We love the history, we love the beauty of it. That's why we looked into Gettysburg as a potential location for myself and my, and my two partners, to invest in Gettysburg as, in, in short-term rentals. Not only would I be negatively impacted by this ruling, but I believe that Gettysburg would be negatively impacted as well. And I condition that by saying that traveling using short-term rental platforms is a, is a new methodology, one that I use all the time, and it provides an experience that you can't get. Whenever I used to come to Gettysburg, we stayed at campgrounds. We stayed at hotels when we needed to, but we usually chose campground, drummer boy before it got really big. But what I would say is that you're getting a quality person, and if you enact this ordinance, you would be reducing the quantity of people, but also the quality. We look to provide a home away from home experience. Number one, that's for people that have smaller children, special needs, military, police, first responders. A lot of these people don't travel and don't go to hotels because of specific security needs and other necessities that their families might need. What we're trying to do is provide that home away from home. So if the, if the Borough does vote on this ordinance, not only are you limiting quantity, but I believe you're limiting the quality of person that's going to come to Gettysburg. I would also say that as a, as an investor, potential investor in Gettysburg, when we did our research before we came here, we had heard that Gettysburg wasn't necessarily a friendly place to do business as a short-term, small, little person investor. I found that not to be true. Everybody I've interacted with with the board has been more than friendly, more than helpful. And I don't understand your reasoning or methodology as to why you're considering this ordinance, but considering the Old Town zoning district where, where we currently have a property under contract, if the board does decide to go with this ordinance, it doesn't make sense to me. Hotels are allowed to advertise multiple units within their hotel on all of the short-term rental platforms, and I believe that that's negatively impacting little, little people, little investors like us who are trying to bring that hometown experience back to travelers from around the world. So I would just offer these comments to you to consider. If, I don't know your reasoning as behind this ordinance, maybe there's something I don't know, but it just seems shortsighted, in my opinion, to limit a residential area that's not maybe in a development to less than one, or one unit or less, or at least one unit. So I offer those comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if any member of the honorable board has a, has a question or would like clarification on any of my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Yep, if you can use the podium, make a break.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Lockman. I own HD Entertainment, and I also am the Chair of Businesswoman Influencing Gettysburg. And I'd like to give you a very brief update on the 2022 Gettysburg Halloween Parade. Our parade this year will be held on Tuesday, October 25th, with a rain date of Thursday, October 27th, and will step off, step off at approximately 7:15 PM. Staging will take place behind Mr. G's Ice Cream in the parking lots of Lincoln Elementary and Gettysburg Area Middle School. The head of our staging area is Stacy Rice. We have decided to reverse the parade route for this year. We're starting on Liberty and York Streets. We'll proceed down York to Lincoln Square, where the judging area and grandstand will be. We will cross through the square to Baltimore Street, and then head back down into the staging parking lots of Iola Fever Street. We have secured and are coordinating the following in order to make the parade a destination for those attending. DJ services from HD Entertainment to include a dance party on the square beginning at 5:00 PM with full MC services through the end of the parade. Two photo booths with Halloween props, digital imprinted copies for all guests to be placed behind the grandstand and state and judging area on the square. A costume contest beginning at 6:00 PM on the square for all ages, groups, and even pets with cash prizes. Food trucks on Stratton and York Streets, as well as Baltimore and High Streets, ready to go at 4:00 PM to receive guests. Extra trash cans to line the parade route. A cleanup crew to follow at the end of the parade, cleaning up the downtown area. A dumpster for the staging area for easy cleanup. Porta potties placed on the square and throughout the route for guests and participants. We are currently working with other community organizations and businesses as well to have events in conjunction with the parade from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. We're doing this because we realize that not only is the parade a great family event, this is also the way that members of our community can find out about services they may be in need of through vital community organizations. One of the examples of this is the Housing Authority. They didn't really have the funds to do an event this year, and we said, "We just wanted them to do like a small make and take craft, open their doors, allow people to come in and find out what their services are." Again, they said, "Just due to COVID, they're very low on funds." The parade is now giving them an allowance to create an event at their, at their headquarters, so that they can welcome people into their doors and be a dot on our map for that night, and be a stop for all that attend the parade. We are reaching out to vital community organizations to offer them funds, and we are hoping to get more as well. Gettysburg Community Theater is also on our list to reach out to, among some others. We do have alternate parking around Gettysburg with shuttle services in the works. That was the chief complaint last year, was parking. It was a nightmare. People couldn't get downtown. They were parking and walking. So we are looking at all points, north, south, east, and west. We have secured partnerships with different parking lots around Gettysburg, as well as two different shuttle services to bring people downtown and then take them out at the end of the parade. Let me see here. We are renting traffic signs to route traffic in detours, and the police in the borough have been such great partners in all of this. We thank them for that, for their help with that, amongst many other things. To date, we have 43 registrations. Most registrations will come in the last 30 days. We had 65 last year total, so we're anticipating a parade of probably around 100 participants this year. We do need a few things, and if the borough or anyone else has suggestions on this, we would be open to hearing about them. This is only our second year hosting and coordinating the parade, so we want to make sure that we get it, get this all taken care of. We need more marching bands for the parade. We only have two. We'd like to have a few more. We do need some barricades on the square to help keep crowds back. Crowds were encroaching last year and just literally shrinking the parade lane. Kids were running out. We will have volunteers on each street now, one on each side, to make sure that people do not step onto the street and that no candy is thrown. We do need more of a social media following to get the word out, as well as updates. We're also looking to, we haven't been able to get in contact with Mayor Streeter. I know Mayor Freeling, you might be able to help us with that, because Mayor Freeling and former Mayor Streeter are going to be our dual grand marshals, so we want to make sure that he is aware of that, and, and to ask him if he wants to do that formally. And also, if there are any needs for volunteer police, if we can help reaching out with that, we're not sure where that sits, so we just wanted to try to cover all those bases now. Lastly, one of the biggest things, we are working on an app with students at the Gettysburg High School. We're not sure if it's gonna be done this year. We're hoping, it's just a primitive version right now, to allow guests to find amenities and different events around town easier. So it's gonna be something reflective. I don't know if you've seen the Hershey Park app, where they can click a dot on the map and it expands and tells them what it is. We hope then to turn that app into an app that can be used by all major events in, in and around Gettysburg, to their benefit for absolutely no cost. So when their event is coming, they can use that app to help get the word out, can use push notifications, and have kind of like a membership portal. That's it. Thank you so much.
I have to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Ashraf. Where does this fit on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize.
Yeah, if you, when you come the future, if you can either use the second public comment period or.
I thought that's where we were. I'm sorry, because I saw that.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
My apologies.
Try to handle the same, but yeah, we do appreciate what you do though with the parade. I don't want to detract from that, but yeah, I have to ask the same. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I thought that's where you were. My apologies.
Yep. All right. Other public comment? All right. So that takes us to Ms. Marshall. My name is Zoning.
We all have my reports. I do have one announcement to make. We, planning commissions, we're having a hard time getting a definitive on whether or not there's a quorum, or there would be a quorum for the September 19th meeting. So we're rescheduling that actually to the 26th at 5:00 PM before the council workshop.
Okay.
So that, that will be a change for anybody that, that would be affected by it, and we'll obviously advertise that and put that on the website. So you do have one motion from me relating to the language clarification and regulations for short-term lodging uses. We have the hearing for that on August 22nd, and this is the motion to formally adopt.
Okay. Someone like to make the motion, please?
I'll make a motion to enact proposed ordinance amending the text of the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance in order to revise and clarify definitions and use regulations relative to short-term lodging uses within the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please have a brief review of the, the changes we're talking about.
Okay, so the first change, well, I'm actually not sure if this is in order, but one of the changes was to take an existing standard for bed and breakfast, which is that it be owner occupied, and move that into the definition so that people could more readily see the difference between a bed and breakfast and vacation rental homestay. The definition for in was clarified to make it more consistent with use, and also, there was a standard added for ins requiring that they either have an owner within 10 miles of the establishment, or 24/7 staff on premises. And then, lastly, the item that we have public comment on today, which was to limit the number of vacation rentals to one per parcel or property.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments about the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, we had at the work sessions up here.
Mr. Eastman, do you need to make any comments?
Um, the only thing that I would indicate to the council is that at your special meeting on August 22nd, you authorized the publication for intended enactment of the ordinance. That was, has been done. It appeared in the Gettysburg Times on September 1st, so this matter is ripe for Borough Council to take formal action at this point.
Okay. Questions or comments, anyone?
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly to the public comment on why we would enact this change specifically as it pertains to the short-term rentals or vacation stays. We're a very small town, and we're what's called a direct entitlement community. More than 40% of the people who live here are below the poverty line or low income. There is a finite amount of housing for those folks, specifically in areas like Old Town. The, the trend we started to see in the last few years is that our housing inventory is being bought up by investors, and many of them are not, like you, from the area. Many of them are from out of state, and we will never see them. They were buying entire buildings and turning them into Airbnbs, and we had people from the community come to us and say, "There's no place for us to live." And the places that are vacant are well beyond what we can afford on the jobs that Gettysburg can provide. So why we're doing this is a direct response to the needs of our community, and that really has to be our first concern. And while I do appreciate what you're saying about the, not just the quantity of the visitor, but the quality of the visitor, we also have to be primarily concerned with the quality of life for the people who live here as well.
Thank you. You did not need to offer that, though. I appreciate it. Yeah.
You articulated that very well.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any questions for Ms. Marshall beyond the ordinance? All right. Ms. English?
Thank you. You have my manager's.
Thank you. You have my manager's report. I just wanted to put a reminder on it, which I'm sure Judy may also, um, make a notation on. The next East Cycle event is scheduled for September seventeenth. They are required to sign up either online or calling Ms. Butterfield, and, um, I think that is a free event. The stormwater fees for 2022 are due by September thirtieth, so if anyone has not paid yet, please make your payments by then, or they would be considered, uh, in delinquency. And that's all I have. I have a motion on the, uh, table for the board. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, who would like to make the Harb motion this month?
I will make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on August seventeenth, 2022, and grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA twenty-two dash zero zero five four, major project, two-twenty-five York Street, Gettysburg, Sonoco Mini Mart. Ravi Singh and Carly Marshall, code enforcement, to approve the lighting as submitted with the stipulation that hoods must be applied to all lighting fixtures and is consistent with both the Secretary of the Interior guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated July fifth, 2022. COA dash twenty-two dash zero zero eight zero, major project, one hundred Baltimore Street. Kurt H. Grimm, to replace the existing wood windows with the divided, hmm, gelled win clad window that replicate the current arched windows on the second floor and is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated June twenty-eighth, 2022. COA dash twenty-two zero zero one nine, major project, four oh four Baltimore Street. M. Gladfelter, Mr. G's Ice Cream, to replace the existing asbestos roof system with a woodland GAF roof system and retain all three dormers, and is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated August fifteenth, 2022. E. COA twenty-two zero zero eight four, major project, twenty-nine Hanover Street. Dean G. Harner, to replace the existing five-V crimp style historic roof with a five-V crimp style roof with all accessories, flashings, and snowbirds, and is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated August ninth, 2022. F. COA twenty-two zero zero eight five, major project, one-six-three York Street, Twin Bridges Farm LLC, to demolish the existing brick portico over the open mine's side entrance due to the bricks separating from the building and to restore the wall face using stucco at a reduced height to match the height of the building roof. That is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated June twenty-eighth, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The least you could do is give a second. All right. Um, you know, the one thing is when we have a long Harb list, it is a bit of a good sign that there's a lot of work getting done. Uh, in addition, I hope the members noted in their packets, we, you know, we have a lot of things be administratively approved also. So there's a lot of things moving forward here in the borough. Any, uh, questions or comments about the Harb motion this month? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any, uh, questions for Ms. English?
Probably a question for Carly, but for both of them. Any word on the burned-out building on Baltimore Street? It's been there for two years.
So, um, yes. They went through Harb, they got approved, um, and then they decided to, um, rebuild the way that it was previously. And so the building plans had to be revised. Um, and so there's still work. Um, they may have submitted those, but they're, if not, they're on the verge of submitting, um, their building permit applications, but they, they had changed their plans, is the short answer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, if not, Ms. Thistle?
Good evening. You all have my report. I have my comparisons there. We have been very busy, and the only thing, um, I would really like to mention, um, as you can see on the charts there, the cash has been declining, but the app usage is up. So as the cash goes down, the apps are going up.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Ms. Thistle this month?
Uh, I would just like to say that I started using the pay-by-phone app now that the Passport app is not working, and I, I do have to agree with your assessment. I think it is a bit more user-friendly. I did notice this morning, though, as I was parking, that, um, and this might just be a setting or something, thirty minutes was the same cost as sixty minutes. It was both, they're both a dollar thirty-five. I don't know if that's intentional or whether there's a little something there.
I will have to look into that. Um, I know there was not even an option for thirty minutes. It was an hour minimum before. Um, but then as, at the last meeting, people were requesting fifteen-minute increments, so they changed that. So do you know what zone that was?
I do. It was two oh one three zero.
I'll look into that.
So maybe...
And Passport is still usable until January thirty-first.
Okay. I do like the function on this, though. It, it is really straightforward and maybe a bit easier to use than Passport.
It is much more user-friendly.
Passport is usable, but not if you don't know the space number and the zone number, because Passport makes you put that in, and the stickers are gone.
Passport should not be going by space number. It never did.
Pointless.
I will look into that as well.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions for Ms. Thistle this month? All right, if not, Mr. Clayball? Is, pardon me. I'm thinking Mr. Harbaugh already. Mr. Harbaugh, sorry. I, I looked down at the wrong name on the list. I skipped your name on the list. Two balls, but not gonna say one.
Good evening. Uh, you all should have my report. Um, I really just have one highlight on my report for the viewing community as well. Wolf Alley has been paved. Um, it was actually finished last month. Um, we're looking to start to pave Shealy Alley, and we're going to add, uh, another short section of alley on Davenport Alley this year. Um, and we're looking to start those in, uh, third week and fourth week in September.
Very good. Very good. Yeah, I saw you were gonna squeak a little bit more out, so that's always good news. Any, uh, questions for Mr. Harbaugh? Yes?
I want to roll tonight. Any word on the, uh, phone company removing their poles that MedEd have replaced?
All over town or just specific area?
No, all over town.
Yeah, I, I don't have any answer to that right now.
Well, you know...
Chad, Chad, and Nate Simpson and I have been trying to deal with Unite, or Central, and M-Bark, actually, CenturyLink, um, and we're not really having too much luck.
Well, MedEd replaced pole across from my house. Cut the top off, and I talked to those guys. MedEd just doesn't pick a pole to replace. They replace them for safety reasons.
Right.
And they tell me that sometimes they go four or five years till they can take the old pole out that they deemed unsafe because phone company won't come and take their, move their wires over.
Well, it's not just the phone company. It's Chintel, Fiber Optic, and Comcast, and the phone company, both.
Well, any way you look at it, that's just ridiculous.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, there's at least, I gave you a list the other year, at least eight. There's gotta be another half dozen probably in town now. I'm wondering if it's not time for our solicitor to write a letter to PUC?
Okay.
And try to move them along. I mean, why should we put up with unsafe poles? I mean, the one...
Yeah, that's a good point.
The one across from Ridge Avenue in front of the bank on West Middle Street leans out into the street so far now that when Pendot went by last winter with plows on the sides of their truck, they hit it. You can see where, you can see the gouges out of the pole. It's ridiculous. You know, everybody pays their utility money. There's a utility tax and everything else. If they want to own the utility, they gotta do the work.
Right.
I don't think that the residents of Gettysburg should have to put up with unsafe conditions because they don't want to be bothered moving their old poles.
Right.
Or not their poles, but moving their wires off one of them. I mean, MedEd came in, provided them with a new pole. Alls they have to do is bring a buck truck in, take the wires off, move them on to the other pole. It's ridiculous.
With South Street that we did, we, we had good communications and relations with them, but, but now that that's done, it's sort of dropped the ball. Because we mentioned to them about the other areas in town that need to be done.
Well, it's all over town.
Yeah, and, and they dropped the ball. We mentioned that to them when we were talking to them about South Street. And they did South Street, but they dropped the ball on that.
Well, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I think that we ought to either notify those companies directly or just go to the PUC and bypass them. If they don't want to talk to us, why should we talk to them? Just notify the PUC and file complaint. Do whatever it has to take to move them. Because obviously they're not going to move on their own.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
And MedEd's hands are tied, you know?
Right.
Oh, no, you can't take out a pole that has, that someone else's equipment on it.
Right.
So are those essentially our options?
I think those are, they are only options. You had to either write a letter to the utilities themselves or just go to the PUC and, you know, I like starting at the top. It's a lot, lot more, uh, beneficial for my time.
Have we communicated with all the utilities? Do you know, Robbie?
Yes, we discussed with all the utilities out there on South Street when we were having those issues out there.
Okay.
MedEd put new poles in, and it worked out wonderful out there, but the other issues that we talked about...
No one's gonna be surprised?
No.
That we're a little upset?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I, I mean, I favor writing that letter if that's... Everybody's...
That'd be my suggestion.
Do you agree, Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Patty, you okay with writing that letter, having, uh, pardon me, having Mr. Eastman write that letter?
Yes.
Although you're probably perfectly capable of writing that letter. But it'll allow Harry to do it. Yeah, let's go ahead and get that done. Because you have to agree with the, I thought you were gonna head towards clutter, because I know how much you hate sign clutter and everything else. But no, you make a good point. If they, uh, bother to replace it, they did that for a safety reason, so. All right. Any other, uh, questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
The only thing I would say is I'd probably need details to place in the, uh, letter to properly identify the poles and the issue and...
Okay.
Yeah, we have to make sure we have a good list. I guess the big thing, we make sure that we add to that existing list, everything that's out there. So you're making your rounds. That'll be the thing to do.
I can just quick question while we're on this topic that concerns me is, do you know if when they replaced those pole, Robbie, poles, Robbie, if they put, if they renumbered the poles or they just transferred their pole numbers over?
They would just transfer the pole number over.
All right. So sometimes we'll locate things or we'll call them and say, hey, this pole needs removed because, or this pole needs replaced because it was a crash, if they do.
No, I can't speak for, I can't speak for, for CenturyLink or M., uh, Chintel or Comcast, but I know MedEd, when they replace a pole, they put the same number right back on.
And... And so the old pole no longer has a number?
Now, now, well, they're doing, they do do, do renumbering, but if, if they replace that pole and it does have a new number, they will put that new number on it. Otherwise, they'll put the old number on it.
Okay.
And their system will cross-link to an old number.
Okay.
But these pole...
I know the ones you're talking about. I'm just...
Because when MedEd owns a pole, they attach to it, there should also be an attachment number on that pole. Um, if you look at some of the older poles in town, it'll actually say, um, UTC Attachment for United Telephone. They have been here for twenty years.
I remember finding one of those down one evening.
Yeah.
And one of UTC...
I know us, or, or the fire company, as you know, John, will often call them and say, hey, this pole is, is cracked beyond repair. I don't want them coming out and looking at a new pole and saying, bad dog, roll that pole, leave it. When we have one so along the street that's hanging, so.
MedEd's numbering system is very good. They, they move the number over, and like Robbie said, if they put in a new pole and put a new number there, they'll cross-reveren. You might have to wait till the next day to get your information, but they'll get it.
All right. Uh, anything else for Mr. Harbaugh? Okay, Mr. Clayball is not with us this evening. Um, you have his report, uh, on file. I do want to offer some notes.
He was on the phone. Chad, are you still there?
Oh.
I guess not. He was on the phone.
Chad Allen Carr was on the phone.
Huh? Chad Clayball.
Chad Allen Carr was on the phone. Clayball was also.
I thought he was, but I guess not.
Okay. Well, he had provided me with some notes related to his motion. He had asked Charles and I, uh, he's, uh, involved in some family things this fall, and if he could make that work, and we wanted to facilitate that. So, um, related to our CDBG, uh, payment, this final payment for Matthews Construction, um, the construction is one hundred percent complete. Uh, the outstanding, uh, items, uh, are the administrative contract and CDBG project closeout, which basically cannot be finished until we pay Matthews Construction. It was in the amount, the original contract with Matthews, Matthews Construction, you may have seen in your packets, was three hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars, which is based on estimates. Uh, the only adjustment was based upon field measurements, which was approved in June, uh, that added eleven hundred seventy dollars, bringing the total to three fifty-nine, nine sixteen. There were previous payments, uh, applied to this, payment numbers one and two, and the amount we'd be approving this evening is the one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents that is remaining. Uh, the only change order processed was an updated Davis Bacon Wage Rate, but it had no effect on the project. Uh, a few minor modifications were made, uh, reflected in Field Order Number One. Uh, they did not constitute a change in the contract price. Uh, and all other of the contracts, uh, with Y Electric for the lighting, for instance, and Clearview Excavating for the storm drain have been closed out. After this, payment is made. South Street will be deemed finalized project. So, can someone make the, uh, CDBG motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the application for payment number three, final, in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Matthews Construction Services LLC in connection with the South Street CDBG curb and sidewalk improvements project.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sorry, take your pick. Uh, questions or comments about the CDBG payment? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Uh, any questions for the engineer that Charles or I can try to field or we can pass along? Okay. If not, on to Chief Glennie.
Good evening. Um, you all have my report. Be happy to answer any questions. Um, over top the report, a couple of things I wanted to report out. We, uh, I think you saw in there that myself, Officer McDonald and Officer Wendrick went to the, uh, or participated in the, the final gathering of the overdose awareness walk, and we were happy, I learned earlier that day, and happy report that we've had, as of August thirty-first, which is when the walk was, no overdose deaths in Adams County this year. Um, we have, even though we started out the year with a bang, we've only used Narcan twice, uh, which is much better than last year. Um, so I think as far as from an overdose perspective, I think that the, the task force is doing some good, good, and I think hopefully it's not just that Narcan's doing a lot of good, but there's some other things happening and some people moving away from drug use. Secondly, uh, we've been getting a lot of, of, of complaints and concerns about speeding violations in the borough. To that end, um, I have assigned one a couple of days now, and we'll assign, actually, two days this week, and we had a couple of days last week. Officers came in and do nothing but speed or traffic enforcement. Um, and then I relayed some of those results back to the, the community members that, that made the original complaint. So unfortunately, we have about four hours of dedicated enforcement time over two days on the Fourth Street issue with speeding, and we have not made any contacts on Fourth Street. However, on West Middle Street in the area of Hay and the other place, we have issued nine citations and given two verbal warnings in a four, in four hours over two days. Um, so we, we will continue those periodically. We use grant dollars as much as we can to fund them. Some of these last ones will be, are borough-funded, but, but we've received enough complaints that accidents are, are rising enough that I think that it's warranted, uh, to expend those funds. So I will continue, um, to attempt to schedule some people in and, and try to see if we can't get a handle on the speeding issue. Because we, we've got one, at least in, in a couple of locations. I don't, I don't believe that, that there's... There, there's definitely a speeding issue, but the, the cars that are going sixty, you know, people, the complaints of sixty are perception issues. Uh, but there are speeding issues out there. You know, there's, there's forty mile-per-hour cars consistently in some of these areas that, that we're attempting to slow down. That's, uh, that's the one thing, the two things that I wanted to touch on outside of report again... That's the one thing, the two things that I wanted to touch on outside of report again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did want to mention there's a motion under my tab on the agenda for the approval of the job description for master sergeant. The actual job description is in under the office of the manager. In going through that, and I'm sorry I was remiss, I didn't look at it until I got in here tonight. I believe there's some errors in that because it refers to sergeant the whole way through till you get to the last line. I think all those sergeants were to be switched over to master sergeant. I'll give you a purpose, to establish procedure delineating the duties and responsibilities of sergeants within the Gettysburg Borough Police Department. That should read master sergeants within the Gettysburg Borough Police Department. This is the master sergeant's job description. So, unless I got an old version again.
Can I suggest another place that I think could use a little targeted enforcement?
Sure.
The LaFever in Baltimore, particularly around the times of day that schools are coming in and out. That lighted crosswalk, people do not stop for it. And we've had somebody struck in that crosswalk in the last two years and I'm doing drop-offs and pickups there every day and I don't think I've seen a single day where somebody does not behave poorly in that intersection at really sensitive times of day.
I will. We have, the new grant period starts and we receive a bit more pedestrian enforcement grant and that's not just enforced pedestrian, but motor vehicles associated with pedestrian traffic as well. So that grant is coming around whenever the state's fiscal year starts and the grant periods end. So it should be coming around real soon. So I will, we will definitely hit that crosswalk and make sure that that gets some pedestrian enforcement.
I don't think it's going to be a common one. Okay.
And that's.
Yeah, no, we had this on the, on the work session agenda also, but you are correct. I suppose when I read this to myself, a master sergeant is a sergeant.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's a simplify to replace.
Well, there are some places where I think it would be okay the way it is, but there are certainly others that it is not. So consulting here briefly with Mr. Eastman, we'll put this off until October and I don't think it's going to have any negative impact on getting the movement of the proportional process because I know that we have to do some things with civil service also. So we can still get that primed, but it'd be best that we have a clean copy. So we will do that. Okay. I would comment that on Fourth Street, that one was definitely, I mean, everybody knows the approaches to town are an issue. And then Fourth Street over the last several years has become worse, although I think when I took my driver's test, they intentionally took us down there if I remember correctly. But the other day I was, I looked down at my speedometer because somebody was sort of pushing me on Fourth Street and I was doing just about 25. Might have been one or two over. And I was like, huh.
Well, that's, you know, we will definitely go back down there, you know, as council is well aware. We're limited with the tools that we have to do enforcement. So right now, we're staying relatively close to the bridge because it's a big fixed object that we can, it is a point of reference for, for our VASCAR as one, as one fixed reference. And then we have our Enrad, which the officers will take out. They could cheat a little bit down closer to the turn with that, so.
And we did receive communication and I think there was something published somewhere as a letter to the editor from, I think, the one person I've ever met or heard from, pardon me, didn't meet the gentleman, that was outlining all the reasons we shouldn't have municipal radar.
Yes, we, I have seen that as well. And, you know, I will, I will agree with one of his points that the police's main job is not to write tickets. It is to facilitate the adherence to the traffic laws, not write tickets.
I'd agree with that, Mari. I think our principal issue here is that people are not slowing down, particularly when they're coming into town. So I appreciate that we're trying to do the things we can with the tools that we have.
And we'll continue to address it and.
I know.
Hopefully get a handle on it.
That that is a battle.
Unfortunately, as I kind of just mentioned, people know when they're there, so, you know, they can see. And unfortunately, that, the abatement doesn't last once we leave.
Right. Mr. Law?
I think he answered the questions, but I saw the one letter that was in our packet and I would question the amount of cars that he counted in an hour. As a person, he uses that intersection probably more than anybody else in this room. I think his counts are high.
I didn't see his numbers, but, you know, we've had no crashes there. Again, I will, I'll be the first to admit there's speeding on Middle Street.
Yeah.
There is speeding on Middle Street and it's both coming in and going out and, you know, we'll attempt to address that. I have not been able to recognize a consistent speeding issue on Howard.
That's why I was calling Mr. Law.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, his letter.
Questions about Howard?
Yeah, I mean, in the first place, he is right. It is a shortcut from Middle Street to High Street. There's no argument about that. But, you know, I mean, even with one of my faster cars, to make that turn off Middle Street and be at 69 hour till I got to High Street, I have a car that can do that, but not too many people do. I got to question that.
It would be a great effort to reach 60 and then still make that turn at 60. Because that would be one to gas heavy and then one to brake heavy before you make your turn, so.
It's doable, though.
Oh, yeah. I'm not going to argue that.
These are not the things we're trying.
But I don't see it occurring frequently, but I do think that, you know, the speeding on Middle Street in that area exacerbates the perception of a real issue there. So, and I'm not saying there's not an issue, but there's definitely an issue of perception. Cars always look faster than they're actually going. And, you know, we will do what we can do and I will continue as long as, you know, we're, we have the funding to try to get some traffic enforcement out there. We are, I know you all get sick of hearing me saying increasingly busy, but, you know, we're just very busy on our daytime patrols as this weekend was just atrociously busy.
Well, depending where they sit out there for, while they're doing speed, if they can keep their eye on the light on top of the hill because there's a lot of left-hand turns made up there coming into town that aren't supposed to be.
Again, that one's difficult because if they're running the VASCAR zone, they're sitting back on Hay probably and it's blocked by the townhouses that are there. If they're sitting across the street, it's blocked by the other house. So you're really, we're really confined where we can see both those lines on Hay. And if we're running the Enrad, I mean, they can get a little, they're a little more leaning there, but you got to have a place where you can get the two sensors off the road and they're not really noticeable. So that would definitely be an area that radar would be an assistance in.
Questions for the chief? All right. If not, on to manager and treasurer's office, Ms. Stoll.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Gable?
I would just note that the conversion to segregate all the borough's reserve funds is now complete. So there are now just under $950,000 in reserve funds, which will remain segregated for the next, hopefully never to happen again, emergency that would require using those reserve funds. Aside from that, there is about 2.3 million in the general operating fund. From a fiscal perspective, I just highlight that our pillow tax seems to be leveling off and talking with Carl Petersak over at Destination Gettysburg, he's noticing this trend as well, that things seem to be leveling off in Adams County, probably as a result of the recession that is, if it's not here, is looming. Conversely, however, our parking numbers are still quite strong. So anecdotally, that would suggest that folks might not be staying overnight but are still making strong day trips to the municipality. So that's certainly numbers that we'll want to keep an eye on, not just for Gettysburg Borough, but for the county as a whole. Aside from that, I just have three motions that are pretty routine for my tab.
All right. Let's start with the bills and payrolls, please.
I'll make a motion to accept all bills and payrolls as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments about the bills or payrolls this month? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next the COLA for Sergeant Wilson.
I'll make a motion to authorize COLA increase for retired police pensioner Kevin Wilson to be paid from the police pension plan effective August 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the COLA? Not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and the next is our appointment to the HRC. Mr. McClure?
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Caleb McClure as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Human Relations Commission to complete the unexpired term of Jay Ekman, whose term on the Human Relations Commission will expire on April 15th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and this gentleman fulfills the clergy portion of the.
Yes, Pastor McClure is new to town. He works right next door at the church right next to us and he's a very enthusiastic young man and we were lucky to meet him at the National Night Out. Judy and I approached him to talk about the need and importance to have a person from the faith community on such a body and he was very eager to help us out and get to know the, get involved with the greater community. And if you get a chance to meet him, please, please do so and welcome him here to Gettysburg.
Good snag. Me too. All right. Any questions or comments? Not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Any questions or inquiries for Manager Gable or Ms. Stoll this evening? All right, if not, we'll move on to liaison reports. Ms. Sellers?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Jill Sellers, President of Main Street, Gettysburg. A couple of things going on. Gettysburg Christmas Festival, I tell you this every time, but it is coming together. Activities, events, sponsors are coming together. There's some good things that are going to be happening. So the website is updated if you want a little sneak peek. So go take a look at agetysburgchristmief.com and watch for more additions to that list. Very excited to be working with Gettysburg College. We have reintroduced or rebooted the college ID discount program for students and families. So we have between 45 and 50 participating businesses. So, you know, if they come in, show their ID, they get a 10% discount usually off of goods or services. So I'm really excited to have that opportunity. It kind of went to sleep during COVID and we've brought that one back. So the brick program, as of today, 103 bricks will be installed on Lincoln Square in November. The scheduled installation date is Monday, November the 7th with a rain date of the 9th. That's to avoid Veterans Day and make sure we don't cross over with any of the holidays or time off of school. To comment on Charles's mention of the word recession, I am working with Destination Gettysburg, The Chamber and the Adams County Economic Alliance and we're looking to make a gathering probably in the new year with inviting businesses in Adams County to sit down and kind of strategize of how we can best prepare for what may be coming down the road as far as changes in our economy from what we've seen and how we can give them some tools that maybe can bolster us for something that might be not as unexpected as COVID, but certainly something to prepare for is a change of pace, so. And then to comment on Chief's comment about LaFever Street in Baltimore and the comment that was made about traffic control there, yes, dropping kids off and picking them up every day, that is always a dicey intersection. Big shout out to the Gettysburg Area School District Traffic Control Guys who are brave enough to stand out there in any weather and brave every parent that is either paying attention or not to get their kids to and from. But I agree, that would be an awesome place for an extra look to keep our community safe. So as always, thanks for all you do and I'll field any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sellers?
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Carr, GARA?
I just want to highlight, it's not necessarily a GARA program, but it is at the Rec Park, the Heritage Festival. The Adams County Heritage Festival will be on September 18th from 12 to 4 at the Rec Park. It's initiated by the Interfaith Center for Peace and Justice and is now co-sponsored by the YWCA. The community event continues to be a joyous celebration of ethnic diversity and cultural heritage found within Adams County through food, music, and arts. The event is free to attend and open to the public. All ages are welcome. And I want to also highlight the Heritage Festival Bicycle Parade that Mrs. Butterfield just handed to me with our parade marshal, Mayor Rita Freely. And the bicycle parade looks like a lot of fun, especially if your kids are 12 and under because they could register to win a $350 gift card to Gettysburg Bicycle and Fitness. That's going to be part at the Rec Park at the Heritage Festival. I believe they start decorating bikes, bike decorating at 12:30 behind the stage or you can decorate at home. Helmets are required and you get a free can of Lucky Leaf Apple Juice courtesy of Nows Foods just for wearing your helmet. And then the bicycle parade is there on, is it Biser Trail at the Rec Park and it starts at 1. So check out the Gettysburg Area Rec Park and the Adams County Heritage Festival information online if you need more information for that. But that is again, September 18th, 12 to 4. And I think it was last year that I went and there was a lot of great food, so check that out.
I wasn't going to mention, but it's on Sunday and there always is. And I'm glad you mentioned the bike parade because Mr. Joel had emailed me.
Yeah.
I'm sure he would like that mentioned. All right, Mr. Berger, GMA?
Yes, not a lot of major changes with the projects. The Andrews Well, which is a proposed well, a couple miles south of the borough. Boucard Horn is preparing the Oqfer Test Plan for PADP review. I think most of you know that the Harris Ridge Tank Zoning Text Amendment was denied by Cumberland Township Supervisors. Boucard Horn and GMA management are reviewing alternatives. The Interceptor, which is a sewer line that's in its second phase. They're discussing project with property owners, getting easements and so forth. And that's, that's in the process. Mark Geist did have one question. It was a kind of a concern, Charles, not a major concern, but the Baltimore Street project, you know, the next phase of it. He doesn't know if it's too early in the conversations, but just to make sure that GMA is part of the discussions moving forward, you know, the other utilities and so.
We always coordinate where we can.
Yeah.
The borough did not receive the raised funds, the raised grant, so we will be reapplying for that grant again next year. So construction would still be several years off.
Okay. Okay, the bid, Mrs. Butterfield?
Steinware Avenue after places are the latest handout. Spokesman from the Park Service has been attending the Steinware meeting and these are some maps that he distributed. He announced that the Round Top and Devil's Den projects are on schedule. People have griped that they've happened over the busy time, but they are moving along on schedule. Shortly, the work on the Lee Monument will begin and that's rather extensive, but they will not close any major roads. They will close the loop around the monument to do the work, but traffic will not be interrupted on the main drags to there. Some interesting conversations about trash bins on Steinware occurred. Apparently, there are some bins along Steinware that have zero business. The merchants who are nearby notice that they're just not used at all. But otherwise, there are bins along Steinware, particularly by food places that are walk-around food. They are filled to overflowing twice a weekend. But my point, I mentioned this to Carly when we were talking about it, that if we decide to move some of these bins around, we should consult the Steinware folks because they are observing daily what is working and what isn't. And the final thing I wanted to mention, there have been some financial issues. Marcy Crop, who is the treasurer of the bid, has been working with Solicitor Eastman and Solicitor Todd King to work this out. And she had the most positive report of how the borough is really interested in working all this out and being accommodated. out and being accommodated, and she particularly complimented Tammy. And Tammy's very positive attitude and can-do attitude there. So that was a nice report from them on that issue.
Okay, very good. Mayor Freling, the Borough Association.
No meetings until September nineteenth.
Okay.
Could have a break during the summer next meeting, September nineteenth, but I did talk with the head of ACBA, Ron Harris, today, and we had a good conversation.
Okay.
Just about local concerns. A lot of other communities, and I think everybody knows this, are having speeding problems. So we guys sat down and discussed that, and I discussed that with another mayor, and we were coming up with other solutions, and talking about other borough mayors, how they're trying to handle the problem.
Okay.
I guess I should have come out in my comments.
No, you're good. Back to Ms. Butterfield for the COG.
Yes, the COG, the last reading of COG, the program, was a very interesting one and appropriate to us, how municipalities should act to avoid lawsuits. And my ears bugged up, and I sat up straight and tall and listened carefully. One of the things that was mentioned by the presenter was just what the chief has talked about a few minutes ago, that once something is mentioned publicly as a safety issue, municipalities must show a follow-up plan and what they have done to deal with that mentioning, and the chief did that very thing, and we should be sure that it goes into the minutes that way. The Fourth Street issue, the stop sign at Middle and Stratton would fall under that, because it has been discussed publicly. So an interesting way to avoid lawsuits, and it appears that we're doing that.
Okay. ACPO?
Yes, just today, ACPO does not meet until October, because they meet quarterly, but just today it was released, a news release, that, of a grant, multimodal grant coming up, and particularly Andrew Merkel contacted me that Baltimore Street might be eligible for some of those, and of course, the sidewalks and streets with that. But the deadline is November fourteenth, but it was, the press release was today, and Jill, I have that press release with me. I'll make sure you get it this evening.
That's it.
Okay, overdose awareness, Mr. Murray.
The task force had a busy August. We, on the twenty-seventh, we were at the farmer's market in the broiling sun, handing out Narcan to as many people as we could. And then, just a few days later, on the thirty-first, we had the overdose awareness walk, memorial walk. We walked from the courthouse to, to the Rec Park, passing Mercy House, as well as Collaborating for Youth, which works intrinsically with the, the task force. We were giving out Narcan at much higher levels than we have been all year. One of the core missions of the task force is not just prevention, treatment, and recovery, but also removing the stigma around overdose and the stigma around keeping Narcan in your home. I, I know I've said this before, I just want to remind everybody that opioid overdose can affect everybody. We, we think of it as something that only afflicts people who abuse recreational drugs, but that is not the case statistically in our country. It is something that affects people from all walks of life, and overdose on prescription drugs is at an all-time high. Keeping Narcan in your home, in your first aid kit, could save you or a family member or a neighbor's life. If you would like to acquire some for free, please let me know. I can help you do that.
Thank you. Trail feasibility, Mr. Berger. Abby, Ms. Lawson, anything to report?
Yep, I'm happy to say that there's a new bike repair station that's been installed at the Rec Park. This repair station allows riders to do minor maintenance repairs, like inflating tires, adjusting brakes and gears. And Abby secured the donation of the bike repair station and helped to pay for the installation by working with the Rec Park and, at the Rec Park Board, and the Public Works Department was instrumental in the installation, and Abby really appreciates the support from Robbie Harbaugh and his crew. And for those interested, the station is located along the white walking biking path at the back of the Rec Park that's near the parking area on St. Howard Avenue. And there's been a lot of trending about this new bike station on social media, so folks are already taking advantage of it. It's a really cool thing. It's, it's helping to promote more, you know, bike use in, in the borough.
All right, very good. Recycling, Ms. Butterfield.
Yes, as Deborah mentioned, we're coming up on Saturday, the covered device, electronic device turn-in. As of today, we have just over sixty customers signed up, but I did get to more today, so I still, we still may have more than that. I think we'll approach seventy by Friday. We'll be there from nine forty-five until eleven o'clock at this time. That's the time assignments that have happened, and it will be rain or shine, but so far, the weather forecast says shine, and I'm hoping that keeps up. But we'll be there.
Okay. Elected officials' comments. Mr. Lawer.
Are you looking at a recycling, a shredding event this year?
Yes, Sarah has signed us up for a shredding event May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It will be held the same way that we hold the electronic device events, with people registering for a time, so we keep traffic moving. It will be at Robbie's shop at the Public Works.
You said May nineteenth?
Yes.
That's a Friday?
It's a Friday, yes.
Ellen Hum and I would have had would have been at the Heritage Festival. I will be at the Heritage Festival. I'm continuing a family tradition. I'm bringing the fruit this year. My auntie's always bringing fruit, and I'm proud to be the grand marshal of the tree. And I don't know if this has been over a week or something, but... Did you say anything about first-year walk? I don't think so. First-year walk went really well, and I think it's a great way for the students at Gettysburg College to come in and learn about the town and about the history, and a good way for us to interact and sort a positive relationship with them. I think it went really well. Speakers were good and everything. And the police did a great job negotiating the route.
We tried something new this year with a rolling protective closure with vehicles surrounding the, the group, taking them down. So I think that it worked pretty well. A few kinks to work out, as any first-time operation would have, but as first times go, it, it went really well. We got them, the, the route, if you don't know, was down Stevens to Carlisle, Carlisle to the square, around the square to Chambersburg, and then Washington Street, all the way down to the, crossing over where became Tantytown Road, down to the First Amendment area across from, basically where the ranger station is down there, slipping past that. So it went very well, by my estimation, and it took probably thirty-five minutes to get everyone down, and then they made their way back on their own this year, instead of keeping the whole area closed and coming back down.
So they didn't go up Baltimore Street?
They did not. They did not use Baltimore Street this year. They used Washington, which I didn't know was the actual route.
That's the point.
Well, actually, Washington Street was the actual route that President Lincoln took. I did not realize that until someone from the college told me that. It wasn't Baltimore Street that time. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but I...
I would question the accuracy of that. Significantly, I think the reason that you'll find that was made, they used to go to the National Cemetery, so you'd go up there, Baltimore Street, enter the pedestrian entrance, and now they're being sent to the First Amendment area. So it created a, and this was something that went on for, for some weeks, this kind of back-and-forth discussion about basically how to not sever the town in two for a lengthy period of time, which was really the concern, the, the ability to detour changes when you lose Tantytown Road and Washington Street, which is what they would have lost in terms of access.
How many, how many walk?
I don't know the count. The, the college's estimate on their permit was seven hundred and fifty, I want to say.
Good, I heard good things about you.
And we also interacted with the Eisenhower Institute. Jill Sellers was there, I was there, and Park Service Superintendent Stephen Sims was there. So just trying to keep that interaction up with students. And I am meeting with someone about speeding. I'm getting a lot of emails about speeding, and I'm meeting with somebody Friday here who's concerned.
Okay. Elected officials' comments, Mr. Carr.
Sure, I'll go. So it's not too late, or it's not too early, to make sure everybody is keeping in, in their minds, one of my favorite events in all of Adams County, the Adams County Community Foundation Giving Spree is November third, and you can get even more information about that at ACCFGivingSpree.org. It helps over ninety not-for-profits in Adams County. There's ways to make a donation of any amount with matching funds available. You can drop it off, mail it in, or give online. Again, that is ACCFGivingSpree.org, and the Giving Spree is November third. It's amazing for a small community how much money we have raised for not-for-profits, all very worthy. And I also want to give a plug, over the last couple of years, I know that there's been a lot of residents and tourists alike that have been disappointed that we didn't have a New Year's Eve firework celebration. If anyone out there agrees, it was very disappointing that we did not have a New Year's Eve firework celebration. You can help make that happen by donating immediately. Go to GettysburgAlive.com, and you can make any donation. There's no donation too small or too big, and you can help save the Gettysburg New Year's Eve fireworks celebration on Lincoln Square. I know a lot of people missed that. I know a lot of businesses lost income from that night not having a fireworks celebration, and I'm hoping that we can all come together and make that happen this year.
Okay. Yes.
I'm at your places. It's a rat card for the trap, neuter, and release program. An anonymous donor paid for the printing of these. We only got a hundred this first go-around so that we can see if the wording is successful or not, and we can make adjustments using our local printer brains. I was told by our master trapper, Sue Cipperly, on Saturday that recently twelve cats were trapped in the Fourth Street Dow Tile neighborhood, one of them a litter of kittens that are adoptable. The other small announcement I wanted to make was, I have been asked by the county commissioners to represent Adams County in the South Central Assembly, which meets every other month in Harrisburg. It is a collaboration of eight counties, two hundred and fifteen municipalities, and they meet to discuss problems, to face issues such as speeding and others, and I'm looking forward to it. It, it should be a really exciting time, and I will represent Adams County, but I also will, in my heart of heart, represent Gettysburg.
Okay. Elected officials' comments.
Do we, do we know where the radar bill stands? Is it still?
It's still in committee, isn't it?
Still in committee?
It's, it passed the Senate, but it's still in committee now, so I think it's done for the year.
Yeah, I think they may have went on.
I think they'll have to reintroduce it for next session.
We need to stay on top of that.
Yeah.
And support it.
Yep. It's ready? Sure. Ms. Lawson, anything for elected officials' comments?
No, thank you, though.
All right, if not, we'll go to public comment. This is open to any topic. Five minutes, name and address. Yep, you can.
Sorry to interrupt you again, that, as I have already mentioned in my introduction, that I got the good comments from the council member, that there are about forty percent people living in the Gettysburg area. They are below poverty line. But according to my knowledge, they are more than sixty percent, according to the national data. That what I got from my business, they are more than sixty percent, fifty to sixty percent. But I am worried about that, that if you people will not help to bring the money, to create the resources for the Gettysburg Borough area, to bring the small business in town, I am worried that Borough Council members should not be coming in that below poverty line, because if there will be no budget, no resources, you will be unable to launch any new project in the Borough area. So it's very easy to listen the sweet talk, but it's hard to listen the hard talk. Hard talk is that anything which is coming against your thinking. So this is my line, that how to develop a small business in this town and create resources for the Borough to generate more taxes. The main thing which is not attractive for the small business developers in this town is the property line. They are saying that you have to start the small business from the sidewalk. If there is no front parking for the small business convenience store, nobody will get in, and owner will be bankrupt within six months to one year, because there will be no customer there, no sale, and he will shut down the business. So I will request the Borough Council, please do some, no doubt this is a historical town, but you have to adopt the new laws, new formulas also to generate new resources. It's okay to have a old city, historical city, but as you have adopted the electricity, traffic light, or other things, sidewalks, you have to give some relaxation to the small business developers. The, if I will start the business from the sidewalk, where if you are a customer, you want to buy something, you are in hurry, where you will go, you, customer, owner of the store should come outside on the sidewalk to let you know that I have a parking on the back. Please come and park the, your car there and come in my store. It will never happen. So please, at least if you see all the convenience store in the town, they have the front parking. But when I start developing this one fifty Carlisle Street, the planning department, they are saying also, you should have a parking on the back. It's very difficult. I will prefer not to dwell that land, not to start that project, go to somewhere else where there is more relaxation and more laws. I saw, I met a lot of peoples, why the jobs are going. I was trying to create twenty-five full-time jobs in this town. Twenty-five families can live in this town with their kids. But if I will be unable to dwell four, five businesses, those twenty-five jobs will be gone. And I prefer to have a business parking on the front. Please change this ordinance. No doubt, if there, if there are small business on the road, they are okay. But with a big property, with the two, three businesses, it's hard to have a parking on the back of the business. You have to seriously think about this one, that keep this old town historical, but adopt the new law, new sources, new education, as we are adopting in other fields. We have to consider the small business for the survival of this town also. Second thing, which I was feeling very difficulty in this town, most of the attorneys in this town, they are dealing, they are, they have a business with the Gettysburg Borough. Wherever you go, I consulted, I called, I met with thirteen attorneys in this town, and everybody, they refused to take the case against the Borough, because they told that we have conflict of interest with the Borough. We are working with the Borough. We cannot take your case. Where we should go? You people should hire one or two... Where we should go? You people should hire one or two attorney working with the Borough, not the whole community. You should involve in that one, that everybody is involved in this function, so nobody will listen, anybody.
I have to ask you to come to a conclusion. Your five minutes has expired.
My main request is, the last one is, the Borough Engineer, I was the first victim. He told me that if I pay two hundred thousand dollar a portion of that creek wall reconstruction or repairing, he asked me two hundred thousand dollars. I requested the Borough Engineer that you ever have got money from any person in the Gettysburg to repair the wall of the creek. He said no. I told why you, under which law you are asking me that I have to pay. You think that I have a lot of money? I don't have a lot of money. I have to get that money from a bank.
I have to ask you to come to a conclusion.
Yes, sir, I am done. If you don't want to listen, I am okay. Thank you.
We have parameters for public comment.
No problem. I requested to put the, in the agenda, but I don't know how to do that. I called two, three times, but I have not in the agenda about the project.
That was my, partially, that was my determination that seemed appropriate for public comment. Okay, we're pretty restrictive about what special presentations we have.
No problem. Thank you for giving me time.
Yep. Any additional public comment? Okay, if not, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.